Do you do Gary?
Hello.
Are we recording? Do you want to chair from there? Do you want Tim to chair from here?
Oh, I think it better if Tim chairs from there. It's hard for me to catch everything on Zoom. I know from experience. And he's already sitting in the right place, so.
I guess I just follow what I'm told to sign.
Good, then you're chair.
And I guess I call this meeting to order. Approval of the minutes. Anybody take have any comments on minutes from last time?
I'll move it to the September minute, November first planning commission. Then November fourth.
One second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, then.
Just condition it one. Go on your roll call.
Oh, roll call. Okay, yes, sir.
Number one point five.
Go for it, sorry.
John Barlow.
Here.
Ben Hunsaker.
Here.
Josiah Justin.
He wasn't gonna be here.
Bailey Green.
Also emailed. She was not gonna be here.
Timothy Malat.
Here.
Charlene Rose. Gary Connor.
Yeah.
Ruth Kazi, city council. Thank you.
All right. New business. What do you have for us tonight?
It's it's all me. Chris gets to not talk for however long this is gonna take. Um, the first thing to cover was um, ODOT gave their assessment of what we're gonna need to do on the next TSP. Um, and that will be required in twenty twenty nine. And I'm just gonna kind of bullet point my bullet points, so I'm not going through everything yet. But um, they did indicate a few changes will be needed um, with respect to um, set or I'll let me back up. Um, regarding the single use residential development in schools, increasing allowable building heights and adding a minimum residential density requirement. This is all related to the CFA and their assessment was not that the overlay was going to override the zoning district. Just saying that the zoning districts also need to reflect it was how they did their their assessment. And that they also indicated a multimodal gap summary and highway impact summary may also must also be completed. Um, after the adoption of the CFA, um, because those will inform the TSP update. And an additional planning work will be needed to refine the potential investments identified in the school circulation and safety report. Uh, preferred alternatives for these improvements should be included in the updated TSP. Uh, the TSP may also need to address potential impacts to Highway twenty resulting from the conversion of land from industrial to commercial zoning. And uh, in their minds, there's a different calculation that commercial is gonna create more traffic than industrial was kind of their assessment on that. Um, the the ODOT led multimodal inventory project will provide a data set for valuing existing conditions as compared to system completeness. Further enabling further identification of needs, gaps and deficiencies uh, with respect to bicycle infrastructure, transit, multi-use paths, sidewalks, et cetera. An updated TSP could identify local lifeline lifeline routes to supplement the regional connectivity provided by US twenty and thirty four. And inform development of evacuation routes at the county level. Um, with what is what we have right now and where the development for residential has been happening has caused concerns for um, ODOT. That residents may not be able to evacuate in the event of a natural disaster. Uh, transportation SDC should be updated with the new financially constrained project list following the adoption of the updated TSP. An updated TSP could develop street standards that align with the updated functional classification system. So essentially, they want everything at the state level for anything with transportation infrastructure, way we classify our streets to conform with what it is with ODOT. So they can compare across jurisdictions.
Uh, let's actually went through the exercise last year, so I think we're good on that.
Oh, we're good on that, okay. Let's see, and then the record and this is the part that may still need some tweaking. The recommended approach for mapping roadway classifications in the TSP is to maintain consistency with the preferred preferred ODOT color scheme. For federal functional classification presented in ODOT city and county map series, enabling the comparison of TSPs across jurisdictions. So they mean with what they see online that them the colors don't match, so they can't cross compare and make that.
That's just GIS work.
Yeah, essentially GIS work. They just have to change the color. Of it. An updated TSP will include engagement activities targeting underserved populations as defined in OAR six sixty dash zero one two dash zero one three five. The Philomath Inclusivity Committee, which includes um, counselors and community representatives, could provide input on TSP's updates. Community update on the TSP's updates, community engagement plan and process. The updated analysis would include additional underserved populations not included in the twenty eighteen analysis, including low and moderate income renters and homeowners. Single parents and LGBTQIA two S plus community members. Updates would involve engaging with underserved populations to develop key community outcomes, collect and evaluate information. About how proposed changes would benefit or burden underserved population and evaluate proposed changes to align with key community outcomes.
Can I ask questions as you go along?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, feel free just.
I I the this entire document, the TSP, which I I I wasn't familiar with.
Oh, transportation system plan.
So the transportation system plan relates to the transportation infrastructure.
Of the city, correct.
And that's it.
That's it, yeah. And and part of that's supposed to help influence it is make sure that we have the network for whatever planning and land use that we're gonna be doing. So it's kind of like they it's still segregated, but we're supposed to synthesize that and make sure that our land use and whatever future is not going to. Outpace whatever transportation infrastructure we have. It's kind of the general scope of it from a planning theory perspective.
And this entire study, which was last one was completed.
Uh, two thousand eighteen.
Two thousand eighteen, so it's every decade or so.
Correct.
And so this is this is something that the city contracts with outside agency to do in order to meet this. And as far as the planning commission is concerned, our responsibilities would be to integrate in the planning and zoning codes. Any items in here to support this document.
Yeah, and in fact, as part of the. As part of the climate friendly area. Requirements, there's some funding that will come from the state to all of the municipalities that have to comply with the climate friendly equitable area requirements. Some of that money can go towards planning. Processes such as updating the TSP. And so we're in line for twenty twenty six, I believe it is. Well, the day keeps moving. It was further out and it keeps getting closer. So I think they have the money. And so they're trying to encourage municipalities, go ahead and make those updates to the TSPs or the transportation plans. So that they're um, in sync with the climate friendly areas as well as. Total vehicle miles traveled and all these other kind of state provisions as they've been pushing. They want the TSPs to be able to be reflective of those. And so we will eventually be getting some funding from the state. To hire consultant and bring them on board and to look at that. This is that first cursory audit to say, here's some things that those consultants gonna have to look at.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, and just and I'm gonna go back and ask a couple of the questions. The school circulation and safety report, that is something that the planning commission does not get involved in. That is, that is a tool that'll be used by the city. By 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 public works, I would probably say A in general. I'm talking in general. I think there's probably specifics that may not be, but it's fundamentally information that's fed into public works and what they are doing. It does not feed really into the planning commission as what is under our preview.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
I just want to clarify that.
Yeah, and if I could just add on to that, just so kind of set the full table, the. The school traffic circulation safety study that we did was kind of an independent effort that the city made outside of ODOT requirements. MPO requirements, safe routes to school requirements. It was really a matter of looking at. You know, in in addition to our transportation system plan, it's looking at areas of growth and where that future growth will be. And what the roads and pathways need to be in order to support that future growth. The the school circulation safety plan is really about, based on what we see today in and around our schools, where are the safety concerns that we have? Not capacity necessarily, maybe capacity, but just overall safety, even if we don't expand capacity or reduce capacity. What are just these safety improvements that we can make? And that was the focus. And so that was an effort by the city council and the school board to come together. Talk about areas of concern. We did a large survey that went to the public. We took that back. And then the school board and city council settled in on six or seven primary areas of concern. Hired the consultant to look at those specific areas and make recommendations for improvements to there, help prioritize those. And so that's what we got in that report. It's very much specifically tied to safety improvements, not so much capacity bill, which is on the TSPs you're looking for. And a component of that is gonna add to safety, right? We want this road to be safe.
Right.
But the majority of that TSP is really looking at capacity and making sure that. Your intersections are functioning well, your classifications of your roads are proper, are proper for the zoning that they're in and those types of things. So a little different effort, but yeah, specific to your question, as we answered before. That's not something that we really funnel through the planning commission, because it wasn't really land use related. It was just a safety concern based on what we are hearing from the public as a city.
Okay. Yeah, no, that helps, that helps, that helps tremendously.
And I'm one more point that it'll be kind of glossed upon a little bit later. It seems to be that some of the input we're getting or recommendations from D L C D and ODOT are wanting more of that synthesizing. Of our multimodal infrastructure, including safe pathways, schools and all that into the development code. That's kind of one thing that they're kind of been emphasizing, which which kind of seems to be been the pattern in bigger cities.
Important so far.
But it's like not usual in the planning realm. So this is kind of getting into a different nexus where they want that more.
Chown in the in the zoning code for and that's more under the climate change, um, climate friendly, reducing V M T, reducing greenhouse gases because you can't.
If you don't have a infrastructure where people can walk and bike easily. So somehow we've got to get that in in the code as well.
Where the code develops the the design criteria for the individual projects.
Yeah, and then when I'll trigger improvements for that infrastructure. I'm assuming that's gonna be the the scope of where planning would would have a role in that.
And just on that same sidebar, just because it will come up again soon. This last year, just a few months ago, we did apply for a grant through ODOT for. Um, a a planning for a grant, a planning grant to establish a. I think they call it a safety action plan for the city, which is kind of very similar to the school circulation safety study we did. But that one was kind of not done to ODOT specifications. And we got money from, we actually got money from Campo Corvallis Area Metropolitan Planning. We got some region dollars to pay for that study. So it wasn't, you know, our taxpayer dollars. It was state dollars that came down to help pay for that study, which is great. In order to get money from the state to make any of those safety type improvements, that some of which, many of which identified in that school circulation safety study. For example, Seventeenth Street Crossing, the Nineteenth Street Crossing, all of these future projects that we know are out there that are really safety concerned. ODOT does give grant money for those programs, but in order to get the grant money for programs, you have to have an approved, ODOT approved. Safety action plan for the community. And as much as I feel like our school circulation and safety report was that. It didn't follow the specific guidelines that ODOT has set forward for their safe action plan. And so we need to get a safe action plan that's gonna identify a lot of those projects and more for the entire city. And then, once that's established, then we can apply for grants to help with funding some of those safety concerns rather than funding them a hundred percent ourselves, which is what we've been doing. Um, we didn't get approved for that grant this go around. They're pretty competitive, so we'll apply next year and thereafter. It's an annual. So we'll keep applying for that every year until we can actually get awarded and get a a safe action plan in place. And then we'll be able to, in the future, apply for grant money to make some of those safety improvements with state dollars rather than just all local dollars. And there's a local match component in that still. So we'll always be putting some money towards it, but if we get help from the state for those projects, it's better. It just takes time. So in the meantime, you know, we've done the improvements at Sixteenth Street. We did. Improvements on Nineteenth Street. I mean, we'll continue to do those little things. We, you know, we lit up the. Center island of the Boulevard Crossing. It's all lit up in reflective tape and everything now again. So we'll keep doing those things that are out there on the list, but to do some of those bigger projects, we know we're gonna need some state funding, so we'll keep up to that process. But again, that's kind of outside of what the planning commission specifically will be looking at, which is really more zoning, capacity, road classification, that sort of it.
Thank you.
Again, a little bit of sidebar, but.
No, looking forward to it.
Kind of big picture of what's going on.
Appreciate it.
Well, do you think that would come, sorry?
I'll just.
That one of the things that they mentioned in here is that emergency preparedness. Do you think that will take care of that part? Or is a little bit different?
Yeah, I don't think that program covers it, but there's other, you know, O E M's got program. There's other emergency preparedness grant funding out there, but I think it'd be different. Be a different grant we would have to apply for.
I think in for our area, there it's the twenty and thirty four is like a level three earthquake evacuation route. So that's where it's like kind of tied into that. So there's still that preparedness side for that niche of it, not so much evacuation in the case of a forest fire, we'll say. But it's more of an earthquake evacuation route. And then you think one of the roads that should survive an earthquake in theory. Okay, I'm gonna start and I'll restart on the part where about the underserved communities. So if we just that whole plot together will be make more sense. Um, the updated analysis would include additional underserved populations not included in the twenty eighteen analysis, including low and moderate income renters and homeowners. Single parents and LGBTQIA two S plus community members. Both major and minor updates would involve engaging with underserved populations to develop key community outcomes. Collect and evaluate information about how proposed changes will benefit or burden underserved populations. And evaluate proposed changes to align with key community outcomes. The update would also be required to document historical and current harms to underserved populations due to racism. And policy decisions and to identify areas which disproportionate concentrations of underserved populations. The TSP or twenty eighteen TSP did not include a transportation options element.
Yes, back on paragraph fourteen. Is the assumption here that. Members of underserved populations are concentrated geographically within a city the size of Philomath?
Um, I think they're templating that based on the experience in Portland. Um, but the way that they wrote it, so the burden of proof is worse if you can't show that. Where then if we can't find it in the census tracts, we have to show how we've documented that. And that if we don't have underserved populations, how that's a harm because they aren't living in the community. There seems to be that scope when reading between the lines of how they um, have stated how we need to include that. And this is where I think the only solution we have at a city of this size, because we have an inclusivity committee. Is that they're gonna have to be somewhat involved in in how we're doing this as we're the TSP and probably even in the future, a long range. Um, plan, because that's now kind of the target that state of Oregon is really honed in on at that point. And it seems like the burden of proof is harder when you don't have a segregated, un- underrepresented community. And I don't know how you show or not show that. I mean, all we can do is use the tools we have. And a town of six thousand having an inclusivity committee is pretty unusual even for the state of Oregon. So I think we have that, but it's gonna be all up to what the state says that we have met the requirements or not. Thank you.
You're welcome. Uh, John, I think it's gonna be in our public, in our outreach, you know, provided in Spanish, for example, doing. You know, some additional things we could do in our outreach efforts on the hearings and the information about it. As opposed to like go to a segregated neighborhood and whatever. I think it's gonna be more just make sure those invitations are welcomed to everybody. And and that everybody has a sense of belonging based on language barriers, nationality barriers, any of those types of things. But you're right, we're not big enough to have segregated neighborhoods or some, you know, even. Heavily influenced neighborhoods from one culture or another. So it's difficult for smaller communities, but we'll, you know, we'll put some effort. We we put a plan together on what we're gonna do to encourage that engagement. And we get that approved by the power that we had ODOT, let's say, or whoever's funding us. And that's all we can really do at that point, so.
But I think we do that now.
Door to door, ask them all these questions. And then you would know exactly where they are of everything. And that would meet their needs. Because you could, I mean, I guess I is, and this is even probably a poor assumption, is okay apartments. Probably those would include more moderate to low income folks. And maybe that's just an assumption they're making, but probably generally that's. So you could go to tho- those places and either confirm or turn out with something else. But you, I I think it could be done. I I don't know about some of the other possibilities, because some people probably wouldn't want to say what's going on with them.
But I think at the very least, you could.
How some of that's.
At the very least, you are, that was an effort to get the more transient portion of your community, regardless of. You know, economic status or socioeconomic status or race or anything else, you'd say typically, when it comes to TSPs, we don't typically hear from a lot of renters. Right? We typically hear from homeowners that have been here for fifteen or twenty years. So if we made an effort to reach out to people that were in apartments, we could at least capture that regardless of, you know, we're not trying to capture race or socioeconomic. We're just saying people that tend to be more transient that are in apartments, we're gonna make sure we capture that voice. So, you know, this isn't all just specific to race and gender and and sexual orientation, those. It's how do we show that we didn't say, hey, we're having a public hearing at seven o'clock on Monday night? I have like, what extra efforts did we do to try to draw in people that typically have been marginalized by a seven o'clock on Monday night meeting at City Hall? So can we do more outreach? Can we provide it online? Can we provide it in other languages? Could, you know, are there other things we can do other than a seven o'clock?
I guess it's, I guess it, to me, when they ask for an analysis. That what you just said isn't an analysis. That's that's all I'm. Anyway.
And I think the one avenue that'll be of all this that'll be easier is for persons with disabilities getting a questionnaire out with the various groups. That handle people with disabilities to say, are there with our existing network, are there any barriers for you accessing it anywhere? I think that's an avenue where I think it's gonna work and get more concrete information than I think some of the other modes, just from my experience. Um, where I've had to reach out to um, communities where it's like, we can't access this bus shelter because there's this bump. So it's not an ADA compliant pathway to get to the bus, that kind of thing. That could, I think that's gonna be our better avenue, but I the state of Oregon seems to be really focused on the even bigger, broader brush of D E I in general. So we have to check all the boxes in some way and show that we've at least given due diligence, even if those populations don't exist. And then let's see, okay, right here. Uh, the twenty eighteen TSP does not include a transportation option element. The T O element is required as part of a major T S P update consistent with the climate friendly equitable equitable community rules. But that'll be something we'll have to add in the future because we now have a CFA. Um, Philomath will need to adopt at least one additional non-auto oriented performance standard in its next TSP update. They didn't really go like exactly what we had to do, but we just have to come up with something that's showing. Never comparing the auto to some non-auto mode that there's some parity. And that's where it's like be able to see are people using non-auto more or less compared to previous stuff. So that's kind of like the basis behind that one. And updated T S.
Have you given any thought, Michael, to what those might be in your conversations?
In those conversations, like some of the things I was thinking, because like one, because we have a lot of bike lanes and we also have that multi-use bike path. I know that someone was taking sensors and OCW cog and ODOT didn't know who was doing it on the the bike path that goes to Corvallis.
Um, the Hunsaker bike path.
Oh. Um, that would be one tool to see is bicycle ridership increasing or decreasing. That's probably gonna be the easier one, because it's harder to gauge like. How many people are using a specific sidewalk, because those sensors don't work the same as people walking across it. I mean, if we had multi-use paths that incorporate which ODOT really has an emphasis on that right now of you doing those and have those separate from parks fund. And have that be part of the transportation fund to take away from auto oriented uses. That and then we can mark the the multi-use paths with the and a bicycle traffic increase, then there's assumptions that could be made that pedestrian traffic overall is increasing. So that's probably gonna be the easiest performance measure, I would say, to to implement out of a town this size, because we don't have the. And and Oregon State has engineering programs, like could always see with that R C OCW cog and figure out who can put the sensors and collect the data for us. I mean, so I think that's gonna be the easiest way to be able to administer that down the road.
I mean, there there of course is gonna be a need to be a component of incorporating that into development.
Yeah.
I I mean, in having plans to have more bike paths and all that stuff.
And I can see probably in the audit, they're gonna say that we're gonna have to say like, if a subdivision or an improvement on a street is significant enough. Then that portion's gonna have to have bike bike infrastructure or multi-use path as part of.
Yeah.
The requirement for that subdivision. And I and my guess is that's gonna be what we'll have to add into the development code to show that there's at least some component there that we're gonna be improving the what you call complete streets. Where it's like it has bicycle infrastructure, pedestrian, all that, where it's safer, all modes.
Yeah, I mean, right now we have sidewalk connectivity requirements. I don't know that we have any like bicycle connectivity requirements. So if you're either on the sidewalk as a pedestrian or you're on the street as a bike or vehicle. Um, so that would be an interesting conversation. Do you know if they count transit, our bus service as auto or is that non-auto?
Um, that that would be part of the, so we could include ridership going up as one of the metrics, because that's taking people away from single. Because when they say auto use, that's assuming a single au- single occupancy auto user. So transit performance going up would be a metric that we could use.
And we get those reports every month from Corvallis Transits, so that'd be the only one. In fact, we have been tracking it for ten years, plus fifteen years.
And maybe if we have that one and plus another, maybe they'll say, okay, you're doing, you're doing more than towns of this size anywhere else in the state. You're good. One can up.
Well, I, you know, even now, at the other end of town, and I guess I don't know for sure in every area. I mean, we have a lot of cul-de-sacs, but in some of them anyway, there are, you know, at the end of a cul-de-sac between houses or whatever. There's a a, you know, a path to the bike path, for instance. between houses or whatever, there's a, a, um, you know, a tr- a path to the bike path, for instance, or to, you know, different places, which, I mean, I I think it is a good thing. One one of them happens to be two houses down from where my I'm at, where we live. But I I use it and, you know, all the neighbors around there, they use it. So those sorts of things and, you know, showing them happen and probably should include them just generally. It is, you know, a good thing particularly for walking and well, and for biking as well.
Yeah, I think we have, I think we have some loose language about connecting to existing walkways, connecting to schools, et cetera. But could we be more specific? Probably, you know, I mean, there's nothing says on a cul-de-sac, you need to provide, like, you know, bike pedestrian access from the end of the cul-de-sac to the nearest.
Street.
Or street path, whatever, right? So you're not going all the way back through the cul-de-sac to shoot around. So, you know, but it's worth, you know, we can be proactive and look for those things now as we're updating the code. Or we can wait for it to get rolled into the T S P and then come, you know.
And then another thing, kind of relying to the non-auto oriented. And an an updated T S P will need to identify key destinations for specific mode users. So what's the key destination for transit? What's the key destination if you're biking? What's the key destination for walking and auto? That's kind of the comparisons in the T S P going forward. Um, an updated T S P would apply system completeness standards for an updated. Um, I think that was supposed to be T S P, but maybe it is T R P because it's kind of B B based. Do I know what T P R means off? I think it's transportation.
Transportation planning rules.
Thank you. And may include additional pedestrian, bicycle, and transit improvements as a result. Philomath developed a school circulation and safety report in twenty twenty-three, which identified potential investments that would improve conditions for school pickup and drop off at four locations. An updated T S P should refine recommendations from that twenty twenty-three report, identify new projects to address local concerns, and include proposed improvements in an unconstrained project list. And this one's probably the more controversial one at the very end, so save the best for last. Regional greenhouse gas production performance measures and targets are currently under development in partnership with ODOT and adjacent jurisdictions. Once identified, these performance measures and targets will need to be integrated into an updated T S P. Currently, public parking in downtown Philomath is not priced. Um, in conversation, D L C D and ODOT expressed their desire to regulate residential parking with permits that are, have yearly fees and pay parking downtown or at the very least time limited parking to unsubsidized parking as a means to reduce V M T and greenhouse gases. And. And Chris, just let me push back. And I thank him for that. I was a very professional. Um, to tell ODOT and D L C D to s- tell us that we have to do this from the state down goes against the original intent of S B one hundred that Oregon land use law. Because it was about keeping or Portland, Salem, and Eugene from sprawling and taking up farm and forest land, not to dictate to small communities that are trying to grow economically and be in harmony with the farm and forest land around them. Um, yeah, they took it better than I thought they would, but I I was still like, we we've just flipped S B one hundred on its head. And and the reason I got in the planning was because worrying about the Oregon land use law. And I'm like, this makes sense. What we have now doesn't make as much sense to me. Because we've kind of, now we're saying, oh, we don't care about the ag and forest land as much. This is about making everyone the same type of city. And I don't think that that application, i- i- it has a lot of law of unintended consequences if it's fully implemented the way that they want to implement it.
Well, there there's not, not gonna be any way that the city of Philomath is gonna be able to determine the amount of C O two that is reduced.
Yeah, it's not gonna happen.
It's not gonna happen. And the other thing is, ODOT, at least on the staff level, doesn't care that much about it. You drive, if if you drive to Corvallis and you've been in that one mile long uh stop at the stop light at fifty-third.
Oh, yeah.
You know, they don't care. And and they'll give you some more facts about that. I have over, for about three years, not, it's been a couple of years now. I tried to work with the people that literally make those changes to the lights. And it's still like it is. The only thing they actually changed was for big trucks, because they're slow to take off, most cases they.
Extended.
They let the time be a little longer, so they won't, that wouldn't happen. But, you know, when you're out, out here at Chennars, parked on the highway, when the light at fifty-third, you can't tell me anybody cares about that.
I got, I got, I got a, I got a question.
Yeah, I mean, I care about it.
No, no, I, 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 I know, I get, I, I totally, um. I mean, I, 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 I. I'm appreciative of what you're saying. Let me put it to you that way.
I mean, if, in one, one day during the summer.
Yeah.
We could never save that much in C O two in in all, the whole year.
I just wanna ask, it's, it's, it's a legislative question. This T S P, T S P is that the acronym? This T S P is, is, but it's a, a staff level administrative set of guidelines and rules that have been developed in the interpretive process of a specific law.
Yeah, check.
And and generally, am I, am I, I'm, I'm using the right words. But what I'm, what I'm trying to say is, because when you say you've, you have um tried to enlighten them as far as what the reality is here as based on S B one hundred, what that did, that was in the seventies or eighties?
Yeah, nineteen seventy-three.
Nineteen seventy-three. Um, that, that, that this stuff's being done at a staff level.
Yeah, and.
And, and.
While the ODOT is even, not even done at the legislature because they have the power to do rules and the legislator is just kind of letting them go, and there's been an evolution over time. The T S P component, it comes with like how they want to administer the transportation planning rule and having where it's planned out like twenty, thirty, forty years to kind of mimic what the long range comprehensive plan is. So those two documents should essentially communicate with one another. I I don't, I wish they would have put it more inclusive because I think one of the challenges is like, there's a silo between like public works engineering level of how they would view a street network versus a planning and zoning and how we view a street network and and connectivity. And sometimes those are in conflict. And maybe it's supposed to be that way, but it it seems like that that those two documents, it takes a little more coordination to get them just right. As as Chris and I are learning with some of the street classifications as the T S P compared to the Public Works Design Manual and saying, do we really want a fifty-six foot wide street for a multifamily apartment complex? Or or the Crips property, you know, and it's like when a fire lane would actually be more adequate and make a better use and be a passive traffic calming on top of that, but still allow life safety to be administered.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, so does anyone have any questions, feedback, pitchforks?
So again, we're required to update our T S P by twenty twenty-nine. More than likely, it will be sooner than that, but we'll wait and see when the funding is available from ODOT. They can't fund everybody in a year, so they're staggered out because ours is fairly recent. They updated twenty eighteen, although that sounds like a long time ago compared to some cities' T S Ps, it's actually recent. So so we're, we're kind of, we'll be one of the last ones to come through, which is good. That means all those consultants doing T S P updates and and creating all this will have done it three or four times before they get to us.
Yeah.
And so it'll be a little bit, a fair softer process, hopefully, other than staff kicking against everything, saying, no, no, no. Minimize it, shorten it, simplify it, keep it simple. So. Anyway, so again, just an update. I appreciate Michael's time and going through and putting words to all of that, I think is.
So, so I have a question.
Yep.
Um, just to make sure I'm understanding a summary of all that. Uh, nobody's thinking that there's anything that anyone at the city of Philomath needs to do? Or maybe even would want to do if there's any low hanging fruit prior to needing to update the T S P? Or did I miss something?
And I I can give like ancillary context. So if we do have the ability to do a minor update before twenty twenty-nine, but if we do a minor update, then we have to abide by the recommendations uh that ODOT and L, D L C D have put forward. And that, so we have the option to do a minor report, otherwise we can wait till that major report. This is just guidance of what has to be in the the next T S P.
Okay.
And Gary, I'll just add, I think that there are items that we've already discussed. It's been a year ago now, but with, when we were looking through the residential development, changes to the development code. There were items in there that are in a hundred percent alignment with some of the findings in this audit. So those we will move forward with. There's no sense to wait on those. But there's, there's some conformity already taking place there um that will go forward. But otherwise, I don't see a a pressing need to go through and make any other changes outside of what we've already discussed.
We're not gonna initiate anything that wasn't already in process.
Correct.
Okay, great. Thank you.
On page six. You're going to be, but it refers to. Operational issues on U S twenty three four. Specifically at fifty-third street. But um they don't anticipate the widening project will be funded within the planning horizon.
On the planning horizon would be like, so from that, um, twenty twenty-nine, it'll be ten years. So it's a twenty thirty-nine, they are anticipating it's gonna be widened before twenty thirty-nine. So they're not really.
Hold my breath.
Yeah.
So if we, even if we, and then if we decide to make um main four lane until the end of the Philomath, Salem, and ODOT allow that, that's gonna cause a whole different potential bottleneck issue. Other criteria that we would have to do because we'd be widening a room and that causes some other, unless ODOT initially.
Well, Matt Lehman's the transportation manager at cog now, so that might speed that up a few years.
But yeah, the other thing I didn't include in the email was, and it's probably why I didn't get my, finish my master's in planning, is that I said, well, if you wanna reduce greenhouse gases with vehicles, the speed needs to be between thirty-five and fifty miles an hour. That's when the least amount of fuel exhaust comes out. You're like, well, we can't say that because I'll encourage people to drive. I'm like, well, then, if you want people driving, you have to make a bypass. Well, then that segregates communities, not if you plan correctly. You just don't segregate communities. Yeah, that was. Yeah, don't, don't say that one. Don't go against the orthodoxy in planning is what I learned. Um, what I. I'm sorry, Portland State at that time.
That's why you don't have a master?
They did not let me finish my, and they especially did not like my thesis on how gentrification was used to eliminate um black and Jewish people from the um Boise Elliot neighborhood. And I had methodology, I had interviews and they're like, nope, you can't do this because that makes Portland look bad. I'm like, but it's historical fact. And in modern era, I mean, it happened. It's like that community isn't nothing, I mean, all the houses are gone. Yeah, it's completely, complete gentrification. In the most offensive sense of the word.
Ready to move to the next topic, Kim?
Oh. Do you have any other comments or like on T S P? All right, then let's move on to S P fifteen thirty-seven.
And there was a lot to wrap up right around because I am not a legal expert.
And when, when, when was this put into law?
Um, this last year, I think it was at the summer session, they passed it.
It was within the last.
Yeah, and I was made aware of it about three weeks ago um at a Dara Village. It's like I needed to research, I'm like, oh, this changed something. So now I'm having double duties of having to figure out how to incorporate that. And there's, yeah, it's, it's different things conflicting with our existing codes. So I'm gonna try to break it down. Um, and I'm probably gonna go even less word for word on this one because it's, it's a lot of legal, legal jumbo we'll go with. But um this year, the legislature passed S P fifteen thirty-seven, which places new requirements for new housing and affordable housing that would be considered differently than some of the existing regulations in the form of development code. While the funding has sunsets and starts effective January first, the requirements appear to be permanent. And I had to read through that bill three times to figure out that, oh, this is effective July, the, so the people, applicants and developers to invoke that they want to be considered under it can't do so until July first. And part of that is because they haven't even hired the staff at the D L C D level to be able to administer and enforce. And if there's any litigation, they don't even have the people in place to figure out how the litigation and who's gonna get legal costs back and whatever if um someone's denied um using S P fifteen thirty-seven for their housing proposal. Um, so it, so how it's gonna work starting July first, this, well, anybody who has an existing application already in that hasn't been already approved, or someone submitting an application and said that they want to be considered under this bill, um, and up to ten adjustments, which in our language would be variances. Um, and and then they can be reviewed. And so there's like a list of seven criteria. So if they meet at least one of these, then they can invoke S P fifteen thirty-seven. And one of the, the one that's some kind of the most lenient, or I I call the two, or like the first two, the adjustments will enable development of housing that is not otherwise feasible due to cost or delay resulting in unadjusted land use regulations. Or the adjustments will enable development of housing that reduces the sale or rental prices per unit. All the rest of provisions are gonna be ones that they're gonna approach the city with an agreement like for low income housing, middle income housing, some sort of like cooperative kind of style middle housing where it's like shared ownership. So those are some of the other criteria, but the bar is really low with A and B. But as you go through the list, they're much stricter, much more prescriptive, that's gonna involve agreements. But in all actuality, a lot of, I think what we're probably gonna get is gonna be invoking either A or B.
It's hard to imagine a project that's given money that's not going to, that they couldn't argue is going to reduce the cost of the housing, right? It's like, it's like a pretty low bar.
Yeah.
So, and so am I interpreting this right? That this is basically S P fifteen thirty-seven is providing government funds to developers for housing.
And S D C fees. So if the guy, if the applicant is saying, well, the S D C fees is what's gonna cost be, being able to do this development, then you get that grant. And that's the part, and I was in a meeting with D L C D to figure out, okay, who's administering the funds? I don't think that's even been thought of yet. I mean, it could be local government. I don't know if that's gonna be the county. I I doubt if Philomath is gonna have its own separate fund to be able to administer these grants. But they can also apply directly to D L C D. So I'm like, well, which is, so that part in the meeting, I don't have any clarity on how they're gonna implement, who's giving the grants out. So my, yeah, I I don't even, i- it is not flushed out enough yet for me to be able to say it's gonna be this or that. But D L C D initially, I think, is gonna do it, but I think they wanna get that to where the local, some sort of local authority is gonna make those decisions, but then the funding sunsets in twenty twenty-seven.
Okay, so it's twenty twenty-seven is the, is the funding.
The housing regulations appear to have any limitation. It sounds, it looks like it's in perpetuity. Whereas I've read through the, read through the bill three times.
As you go through this, maybe it's uh 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 enlightened this, us on, on these changes. What these changes, why, why would we want these changes to be in perpetuity? Or why, or what's, what is, what is the reasoning for this? And 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 more importantly, maybe it's here, and because I didn't read it all through, I apologize.
Oh, that's okay.
Um, is that how we're gonna have to implement that? And is it, is it black and white? And, you know, or is, is basically saying. And you know, or is is basically saying, okay. You have to do this many houses, you have to do this, you have to do this, and while, okay, in the beginning, we're gonna give you funds after that. You're all on your own. Is, am I basically interpreting this correctly?
Yeah, that, yeah, you're on the right track on that, and. Some of the things I feel it could be more, we call. Prescriptive and some like these initial requirements, the bar to get in to invoke this. I I I have issues with the first two because it seems like that's kind of, those are a little more arbitrary and not. Especially in the scope, and this is going a little later, but I'll reiterate it later on too. That anybody invokes this, we have to, it'll be a type two site design review and not going before planning commission unless. Whoever is like the planner or planning official denies. The application, then they can appeal to the planning commission and then and then go through the appeal process as normal. But and there's, and the only way you can get an exemption from this. Is if your code generally allows the adjustments that cities shall administer. And they've had um and variances ninety percent approval. Which looking through our zoning code, we, there are some things that in the um adjustments that we shall allow. Would be like a type three, and so we are zoning code right now doesn't conform. To that, if we do that before, and then the other part that makes it more complicated, you apply for an exemption of this law, you have to have it in by January first. Which really hasn't given any municipalities enough time. To do that. If our code was updated, then.
I gotta have some fun tonight, so keep me awake.
Yeah, if we were able, if we had the zoning code and already had all these adjustments and then put it in there. In theory, we could grant and get the exemption because we're essentially comply with it already, and we don't know how to do all the other reporting requirements and stuff that. Have yet to be hammered out.
I I appreciate, I appreciate your.
Not a problem, and then if I'm ve- vague or not making sense, please ask again because I'm I'm wrapping my brain around this still too much.
Question if if the. Why would anyone even apply for this?
That's a very good question. I think it's just more that it is supposed to relax regulations and premise. So and and the um when it comes to the adjustments, they could still ask for that even without the funding that'll. Maybe offset some of that, so two years it's gonna be funded. I I don't know if the legislature will. Add more money in twenty twenty seven, they can look at it again, but it could perceivably become an unfunded mandate. Which, yeah. But when when they don't know the funding forecast, I mean, it makes sense that they only did it for two years, not knowing what the funding forecast would be, so but. Still, I would have made it temporary, but you gotta make yourself look like you're doing something about affordable housing.
Yeah, I mean, A through E, I mean, we can go through this line by line if it's so, but really, this is about. These are the ways that D L C D feels like we can increase housing. And so if you're going to be willing to change your code to allow for these variances within your residential. Developments. Then we'll put a carrot out there and we'll allow you to apply for some funding to help offset. Some S T C costs or other costs for the developer for this limited duration, but it's not like. Make these changes, we're gonna have money for you every year, it's make these changes, we'll have money for you for the first project or two that you do. But the anticipation is they're just trying to get cities a bit of a carrot instead of a stick to entice them. To adopt these provisions, but D L C D feels will increase housing stock.
Because if they could do the E and G, I'm all on board because those are ones that. Are gonna, I would say would need more assistance because of the cost margins. And being able to that model because the profitability is gonna be less in the models, but they're allowing that more broader. Range of it, even though I saw concerns about A and B and how low the bar is, but F um not F um. Yeah, F is also. Kind of a little.
Within the actual bill.
Yeah, I'm saying like, I didn't put what page I did, went page I bit is several, so this would be. This is under the criteria four, and so I apologize, I didn't reference what part of the bill. I was looking, I was just trying to take those forty three pages and. Something that is digestible. As best I could.
Why I was asking that, on on your memo, on B towards the bottom of the page. Or C. The adjustments will increase the number of housing units within the application. Well, ev- everybody would, a developer would do that. And. I mean, I guess maybe not everyone, but it would make sense, and it has zero to do with what they charge for.
Yeah, yeah, so that that, and you bring up a valid point, that one is probably the loosest of all of them. On there, and it's a very low bar to hit because if they're developing a site with nothing on it, and they're putting any units on there, that's an increase, but. They didn't specify that increase based on the base zoning, that would change the scope a little bit of that, but that's not how they.
Well, that's how we get to use the fifteen thirty seven is is you're changing what your zoning is.
And then when you get into what um allowances, so I'll jump to that part because this this is the part that. Our code doesn't align with it as of right now and in some ways, um but anybody invoking S P fifteen thirty seven. A city shall approve up to ten distinct adjustments. So it could be about possibly two or three variances in our code, but if it's all linked to one adjustment. We have to treat it as one adjustment, and it has to be done as a type two. Type two review, so tha- that's where it's like, because some of the things in here. In our uh our variance language would be a planning commission decision as of right now. But S P fifteen thirty seven, if someone invokes this, then we have to, we automatically have to allow these severe specific adjustments even. If our variance code does not abuse that as a type three or a planning commission decision. So some of the ones, the first one is fine because our side rear setbacks could be adjusted not more than ten percent. That's already in our code, so that isn't an issue. This one, on the other hand, would be a type three variance. The common area, open space or area that must be landscaped, da 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 da. Can ask for a a reduction of the space required by not more than twenty five percent, that would be. Under our current code of type three variance. Minimum lot sizes can have not more than a ten percent adjustment. Including not more than a ten percent adjustment to lot whips widths or depths. And you can also do a maximum lot size adjustment of up to ten percent. Um but if you do the maximum, then they're, they also have to demonstrate. That more dwelling units um than would be allowed. Or would be able to be on there without, then it would be without the adjustment. And there's no reduction in density below the minimum applicable density. So um it's, that's a little easier prescriptive because you're just gonna do net units per acre um comparison.
What if our code doesn't identify in an R one? This many units per acre, then that that will not apply.
Yeah, we would have to do a base calculation based on how our is, how our range is now. And then if they do the adjustment, is I can create more units than what's, so it'll it'll be. A calculation, we're gonna have to.
But it wouldn't be something that we literally put into our code, like we were talking about our. Our three, where we were talking, we were, we were saying unit, no longer lot sizes, it was units per acre. Where in R one, we have a lot size requirement, we also include whatever that equates out. To be units per acre in that table, and then this, then we wouldn't have to to deal with this.
Yeah, if we put that number in there and if, and then we can do basis ten percent and they can produce more, that's gonna be, then we have something that. Is clear and objective and measurable, that I think in the case of a.
That's what I recommend to approve for that particular item.
That is a very valid point. Let's see, and then even there's adjustments that will be allowed for. Manufactured parks, middle housing, which includes cottage clusters, multifamily, mixed use residential housing. Bicycle parking. It will allow some reduction in the in this code, and I've got to think about. How we're gonna do that, so it's it's more clear and objective than how it's worded here. Um the minimum number of spaces for use by the residents of the project. Provided the application includes at least one half space residential unit. Which I think our bicycle code um a lot requires more than that at this point, so I guess it would be a significant reduction. And the location of spaces, provided that lockable covered parking, bicycle parking spaces are within or adjacent to the residential development. So that's the part where I'm having a little trepidation because what does, I mean, adjacent is nearby, doesn't mean adjacent in the driveway, does it mean adjacent? On property over, and is there gonna be, so there's some things there where I. In the implementation of it, there could be some difficulty, and in that meeting, they lost over the bicycle parking altogether. It seemed like no one was concerned, but unless you were testifying in the hearing, um you couldn't ask questions, so that made it fun. And then, then they have a provision for uses other than cottage clusters. Um you, they will allow um adjustments to height, or cities shall allow adjustments to height maximums that are. In addition to existing applicable height bonuses. And are not more than an increase of the greater of either one story or twenty percent increase to the base zone height. And then with the rounding methodology, that's aligned city code, so at least we would be able to use our own rounding rules on that. The part that makes that challenging is like, this seems to somewhat contradict the climate friendly areas that talks about no. No maximum, like on the maximums, there's kind of a disbursement, even I think a town of five thousand, if I remember right. We we still had some height, but this would possibly allow an up to twenty percent increase in height. If someone wanted to do that proposal, provided that they're providing residential.
And we currently have high bonuses.
Yeah, I mean, the height bonus essentially is a climate friendly overlay that allows a a higher height limit than what we allow in other districts right now. And then, let's see. Unit density maximums, not more than the amount necessary to account for other adjustments under the section, so.
Oh, what is that?
I know, I, that was where I'm like, I read that six times and I'm like. Unit density maximums, I guess that would be in the smaller zones because like when you look at R three. It's a net, like net minimum of twenty four units per acre, so yeah, that that. Kind of contradicts that, so I'm assuming that's supposed to be for middle, that's parts for middle housing. So I'll, I'll, yeah, there's some things that didn't come out very. Clear in in their provisions, but. That sometimes happens, we have legislature, legislature members that um aren't planners.
Well, I'm I'm sure this stuff came directly from D L C D.
I'm here, I would say that's valid.
Well, and it what the scary part of all this is an example is. In people, fifty people. Makes, you know, sends this thing to the senate and makes it a law and everybody's.
Okay.
We just fixed something. And literally to that few of people even had their eyes on this problem.
Or even read the whole role.
It's so. I'm getting more discouraged by her all the time.
Yeah, and I'm like, I can see a future where it's like, planning is D L C D. Strike that from the, I'll get in trouble. But uh, and then they're talking about there's prohibitions on the ground floor for mixed use, which is like similar to a climate friendly area. Um where we're not to discourage if a, in a climate friendly area, if a mixed use wants to put residential on the bottom floor, we have to allow it. This is gonna say anywhere where a mixed use is allowed, and we're gonna have to allow residential on the first floor. Um and all, but then the exemption is. If the non residential active uses support the residential uses of the building, then that's allowed, so that's another one that. I haven't wrapped my brain around how to administer which side of the scale we're supposed to look at. Because it's like, are we, oh, we're gonna do supplemental accessory uses that help out residential in a mixed use, but. We're not supposed to discourage um not having residential on the first first floor, so I guess. It almost seems to be that we have to respond to however the proposal is. Are they saying they're gonna put accessory uses that benefit the residential on the first floor, which we can allow? Or they're gonna put residential on the first floor in a mixed use, so that's kind of how I read it when looking at it. Like zoomed out, that it's gonna allow one of those two functions, so if it's either or, then then they're. In a sense that we would have to, even outside the C F A, allow the adjustments. And it also would allow adjustments, and Chris is gonna love this part. Right in the downtown. Facade materials, color, pattern, facade articulation, roof forming materials. Entering garage door materials, garage door orientation, total window area. But they still have to have at least twelve percent of total facades window area, or otherwise they would be violating my safety code. And the I S, our I R C I C C code. And then, yeah, and then there's some provisions for middle housing, manufactured parks that. I didn't really see anything that's. Really deferred except for the building height transition requirement, not more than fifty percent. But I can't picture that in a manufactured park, so had a hard time comprehending. What would that be? Because manufacturer homes don't really have a fifty percent adjustment in height, they seem to be pretty standard and uniform, so. I'm not sure what they were trying to communicate there, but it is one of the provisions that was in there. And then, like I said earlier, the only way a local government can request a mandatory exemption. Is if the code already exists and complies with it, and that they have shown ninety percent of all variances in the past five years. Have been approved by the planning commission or city council, and you'd have to have your application in by January first. So that makes it really difficult when you only get wind of this about three weeks ago. Let's see, and then there's some things with respect to urban growth boundaries that at least is something for consideration. I don't know if, I mean, it might be, I know we've had past conversations that maybe the some of the parts to the north. North side of our urban growth boundary is probably not gonna develop to consider other areas. This bill will allow either a one time expansion of the U G B boundary designated for residential uses. If there hasn't been an expansion or twenty, for the past twenty years, or they can swap. Existing U G B land out for a different area that will result in housing greater than or equal to the density. That would have been available with the previous land inside the U G B. If you do any expansion more than fifteen acres, the city would be required to create a concept plan. If the expansion is less than fifteen acres, expansion would not require an expansion, a concept plan. So the part that I was kinda having trepidation, when I first, when I first read this, I thought everything was temporary, so then if. It was truly gonna be even the the housing regulations were gonna be temporary. I would be recommending that we'd probably wanna do an application process and not update the code. Um and that this application process, if they meet the adjustments, then would that would make more sense than changing the code for something temporary. However, with reading it three times and seeing no sunset date for the regulations. To, it seems like we're gonna need to update the code, even if this means its own section. That's like S P fifteen thirty seven, and here's the provisions and just kinda. I tried to put it in like model code language, like bullets, so that way, it's already in some sort of format that. You do that, but I think that's something that. Um all of us are gonna have to kinda. Figure out what's gonna be the best approach to administer and implement this by July first.
So the urban, the um. Climate friendly zone. And this law. We have to incorporate them both. There's not a priority between the two. And if it's in conflict.
Um this, this would supersede even the climate friendly area. Because this one's the more supposed to help with affordable housing. And I, and I think both, from what I can tell, I mean, I, I mean, it's mostly in conformance, there's a couple things that. Might be on the margins that might not, but to me, it seems like. Those two work groups were not talking with each other, and I think one was one work group, one was another work group. One with the ministerial route um with O A R, and then the other one with legislature is kind of. How I'm seeing, how it looks like all this came.
They push out your urban growth boundary. With the intent of constructing affordable housing. To benefit underserved communities. Hereby moving the members of those underserved committee, communities further and further away from services. Within the central city.
And then you have segregation, and then you've shown harm to those because they're farther away from services, then now you have to include that in your reports, so it's almost like a. Yeah, this is a self fulfilling prophecy. Yeah, this is a self fulfilling prophecy more than anything, and. I hate saying that as a planner, but it's like I, it's like, to me, I feel like. There might be some good intention on this, but I don't think they spend enough time talking to local communities that actually care about. Making sure that we have people who can afford to live here. I mean, that's a local issue, because if people can't afford to live here, you're a working community, and then you're not places a bedroom community. And then you're increasing, all that stuff, so I think there's some siloizing that. Is, is causing some of this that, that may have consequences that they haven't thought about yet.
As they talked, as we said, they talked to each other. You, you know, you always mention these ABCs, there is only a couple of those that even. You could say would guarantee you would get low income housing, and so most of it, so most of it is. Whatever anybody wants to do.
You would be guaranteed of getting more units per acre, there's nothing in this that's going to lower the cost of housing.
Well, there, it, on the, the couple of those that say, you know, you have to, affordable housing covenants and stuff. There's two of them, so you.
Those would be the ones I'd be in strong support of any grants or funding, because they're actually addressing.
The issue.
The, the, where there's the pitfalls and where there's the shortcomings to diversify who can afford to live where, you know, and. I tried to bring up those concerns in roundabout ways, but I don't think that was.
I agree with you.
Yeah, you're a valid point.
I have a question. Do these apply to just individual? Um, plots of land where somebody can say, oh, we're gonna reduce all these standards and that therefore it will be more affordable?
Yeah, anything that um allows a residential use, that would be, that's the only baseline for. The, what do you call the entry into the criteria, so yeah, your, your point is well taken, it could be single parcel, well, I wanna get rid of these and knock it, but. Now a house in the ADU where I couldn't do it otherwise and, and say I'm gonna create more housing technically would comply. With SB fifteen thirty seven could ask for adjustments, and if it meets the criteria of those adjustments, yeah, we would, the city shall approve them.
So, so like all these ten percent adjustments, that just means everybody gets an automatic ten percent adjustment. And all of our um standards that regulate facade material and roof forms, materials, doors. There are, you can read this, shall grant an adjustment, that could either be anything they ask for. Or we could just make a tiny little adjustment and then that's all we have to do, but.
And it gets even more like interesting, it's like in those, when it comes to the housing form. DLCD from what I took in that meeting, where it's like roof facade and facade articulation and the wall, like what kind of is gonna be on the outside. Counts as one adjustment. So like if they're building downtown, they could make it look like a tin, tin shed. If they want to, a three-story tin shed with no design aesthetic, it's allowed. Under this, and it would count as one adjustment, and if they invoke and they meet one. And then, yeah. And one of the other concerns I have in both between the climate friendly area and that that I've, I've expressed is like. This leaves a um loophole where if, let's say, a developer decides they wanna buy up all of the downtown. Turn it into affordable housing or market out or whatever, uh, it's like they could perceivably do that with the way. Both of these are written, and then you've, you've destroyed downtowns in smaller communities, and it's like, I mean, it isn't, it hasn't been actualized yet. But it is a loophole that could be exploited.
Yeah, and, well, we, we know that with the CFA, you know, you'd be all.
Yeah, and, and there ain't, unless they, someone wanted to come and buy and like, I don't want this town to have a downtown, this is a climate friendly area. We're gonna put a daycare on the bottom floor so there's some jobs and rest is gonna be housing. We can't say no on a parcel by parcel.
In the va, in the value of land here. All is our zone land per acre is significantly more than C and I zone.
I mean, I zone luckily is protected unless it's in the CFA, but I think in our zoning change, there won't be any more industrial in the CFA. Yeah, but, yeah, it's like, it's, it's a legitimate concern and. I mean, like, and sadly, we're kinda, we had, like, we had to pass the rules as they are and hopefully it doesn't go that way, but. We can still negotiate, but I mean, hopefully, we can get to a balance, but. It, it may take development agreements to get there and, and then voluntarily wanting to sign it, because if they challenge it, then. Move on to the letter of this law, then, I should say, based on an executive order from a governor, and unfortunately. We have to, we would be allowing if it meets the CFA criteria.
So the CFA's an executive order? It is, it's not us.
No, not us, this was, um, they said cities had to implement based on Governor Brown's executive order, I believe it was in twenty twenty one. It was signed, and then several years for administration. This however went through the legislature, which in some ways piggybacked off the CFA to. In the name of affordable housing and, and implement that way, I think they, they're, if. I wish there were some other people in that room that could have rounded out this to, to see that the balance, I don't think the balance was struck on this. I don't know if it's gonna create, it's gonna create.
Five of us or six of us around the table has pointed out things that. We know, you, you can obviously see why it won't work, or parts of it that won't work.
Can, or would you in the open communities litigating this?
I, when it comes to whoever hitting the road and some, I can see, and I could see Eastern Oregon probably challenging a lot of this, um. But yeah, if we come across that, we may, and where it looks like it's going one way, we may have to see the advisement of the city attorney. And then see what, what would be our strategy or work with other communities that would be doing that, because to me, this has kind of gone. Far away from what the intended Oregon land use law was supposed to be, especially on the citizen input side, because I don't think. There was proper citizen input, and we're administering this into zoning code, which is land use law, and we have not vetted this. With local stakeholders and citizens to provide their feedback and deliver to bodies. To put their input and make an informed decision, I don't, I think that was robbed in, in how they did this process. But then the sad thing is if it becomes a law and they're told to administer, then with the infrastructure. That was the fact that started with um SB one hundred, then those, and those laws happened, then enforce that upon the municipality, so. Kind of a weird catch point, but I wonder if there is a bit of a leaving challenges to set me in.
But they have, they've, they're creating it in this separate organization to operate this. I mean, obviously, they knew. They could, I mean, and they have all the, I mean. I don't, you'd be interested to see what John would have to say about it in terms of. All, I mean, they have all kinds of enforcement in there. Making, you know, taking the, you had to court the cities to court and everything to make them do it. To do all these different things that they have in here, so I, I mean, I think they spent good time on that part.
And I'm even more surprised, knowing what I know about Thousand Friends of Oregon, that you would think that this would be something, because they're kind of like land use law traditionalist. That they would, I mean, I don't think they're opposed to affordable housing, but this kinda goes complete opposite direction of the intent of the original law. That I'm, I'm surprised I haven't seen any statement from them saying, this is in direct conflict with the intent of Oregon land use law.
And I understood they liked most of it, they, they had the same concern about the urban growth boundary expansion. That's clearly. Obvious their mission, but otherwise they seem to be very supportive of it, but this was so top down, and there's a reason it went through the short session legislature.
So what is it we have to do as soon as this takes effect, other than just wait for somebody to apply?
So we either, we have essentially two options, we could either update our development code. That allows for the things in SB fifteen thirty seven, which if we go that route, my recommendation would be. That instead of like incorporate all of there, that it's gonna be its own section, I think it's gonna be cleaner to do it that way, so that way. If they do that, we, we'd still have to apply like, like a residential, like a here's the setback to all that, so to make sure that the adjustment meets. Those requirements of ten percent and what have you, or the other way we can do it. Um, that was acceptable, because that question was asked in the meeting and testimony, is that we could just have an application process. Since it's gonna be a um, a type two review, wouldn't be something that'd be going before the planning commission unless. Um, the zoning official or the planner denies the application and they appeal. So those are kind of our two options that we would have in implementing, but we'd have to have one or the other ready to go by July first.
In my mind, this, this law and the interpretations of it, it's gonna be very fluid. We're gonna be chasing our tail, trying to incorporate this into the code, it's a law, it exists. We're not, I, we could put somewhere in, in the boilerplate of our code that. Issues relating or criteria relating to state bill, da, 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 da. Or is contained in this separate document, and just let that thing stand alone. And just concentrate on what we're trying to do right now, because. If I, I'm gonna go back, I'm gonna look at it as, as a, a, a unsophisticated builder. Whether it's a individual or a couple, an unsophisticated developer. This would just drive you freaking mad, when you open up the code, you won't be able to understand in short order. And spending a half hour to an hour and a half in that document, what I can do. Now, the ones that are going to use this code are gonna be far more sophisticated developers. And they're gonna have the legal teams and everything else behind them to be able to go and to use this, so that would be what my recommendation would be. As we just reference this thing, we don't, we don't say it's not there, but we just reference it. And those that want to go down that path, okay, cause it is pretty straightforward to what it's saying. It's just a few things like, you know, like the density of an R one, maybe that's something we should include. A little more information on ours, so that when staff gets this thing.
It's something easy to measure.
It's gonna be something easy to measure, you're not gonna spend a lot of effort, just trying to interpret it, that's what my recommendation would be.
Yeah, I think that's kinda like, I was going back and forth, but I think keeping it separate, it's like, even if we had it, I'm like, I don't, I, 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 to me, it would have to be its own separate section. Otherwise, it needs to be just an application, we do our pre-op meeting.
But I wouldn't make it a separate section, I would make it a separate document.
Document, okay. Just make reference to it. Okay, I, I, I think that, yeah, that, that's why I wanna like bring that advice to you, because I'm like. I, it's like I could see pros and cons of both, I was leaning towards one until, I was leaning towards having it separate until I saw it wasn't temporary, but now after this discussion, I'm like. Yeah, it does make more sense just reference that anything SB will be found here and in this application document. Go from there and let people know, application will not be accepted until you do a pre-application meeting, because we could still require that.
Yeah, we can write some procedures to go along with this, as part of that separate document.
So you're, you're, now, I guess to me, it's, I'm not clear, you're saying a separate document.
I say it's outside of our development code.
So an application itself would be fine, and with, you know, having this. Yes, next to the application.
But it's not, but we don't include it in our development code, we referenced it, it's just like you reference, there's parts in the code that you reference the building code. Only, we don't, the building code isn't part of our code, it's a reference document. This is a reference document.
I guess what I should have said was, it, it wouldn't be code itself. If the application would be all it was.
Should that be a motion?
It's a good question, I don't know. I wouldn't wait till you bring something, then we. Council want to maybe make a decision on that.
Can I rephrase at this point? Can we at least say we recommend to staff to use that as the initial approach to bring it to us back officially?
I think, yeah, I think that's, yeah, I think that's.
Fair way of putting it.
Yeah, I agree.
Do, do you have any opinion one way or another, Chris?
I'm with you, I think. Chasing their tails is a good way to put it, I mean, ever evolving, so I think a reference to it at most. But even that, it was necessary, I think it's really just looking at the recommended language that's gonna be coming out on this. It's, it's its own program, I mean, really it is, and it's just a matter of whether or not the city wants to offer it to our residents or not, so.
We don't have a choice.
Well, we don't have to. I mean, we do still, we don't, there's some of this we don't have to do if we don't wanna be involved in the grant process, but. It puts us at a disadvantage when we're competing with other communities to try to provide housing, so. I think it's its own program, it's its own write-up, it's its own application, and they're gonna have templates for all that for us to use and.
Oh, you, you won't even have to create them?
No, they, they've got models, like, there are model templates that'll be coming out.
Oh, okay, yeah, well, that would be helpful.
Obviously, it goes every other community in the state, so, yeah, it's one of the requirements, actually, I was just leading earlier in the. Code, it's one of the requirements, DLCD shall provide jurisdictions with forums and applications, whatever, so. So, kind of, we're really kind of a third party conduit, I mean, the more I read on this is. We're gonna have forums available, if they're requested, they'll fill them out, we're gonna review them. Deem them complete within ninety days of deem complete. Move and we're gonna send them on to this new housing committee. And they're gonna review them, we're gonna hear from the county on what the assessed tax values are and all this stuff, and they'll get those numbers. And they'll make a decision on whether to loan the city the money or not, we can add an administrative fee for our cost of administering it. And you kick the loan or the grant out, and, but we're kinda just administering this state program and.
Do, do, does the city, i.e. the city council, have to in some way accept? That we want to participate in this program?
Pass a resolution or an ordinance to.
And that would be done at the city council though, that's not done at our level.
Well, we can sit here first.
So, so, yeah, I think that's part of what Ruth was saying too.
Yeah, so we'll have a draft resolution or ordinance, it'll come to you, you'll review it, and then we'll kick it on to the city council.
When you said county, I, I, I forgot all about that, and I would say that I, well, one did read the whole thing. But it seemed like there were places that was bouncing between the city and the county. Which, I, I just started getting confused frankly, I mean, if, does that stuff look? Correct, like, I, or, I mean, I, it almost made me feel like, well, is the county co, gonna come out and develop in our UGB?
No, but some of this housing takes place in counties, not in cities, and so the county has the same requirement that we would have. The, the role that the county played for us is mostly just in looking those assessed values on applications once they're received. The, the tech county tax assessor is looking at it. And they pull money out from the fire district portion of the taxes and they do some black box.
I would be interested to see what um, the city attorney has to say about that bill.
Is there anything else on? That's the fifteen thirty seven.
Wizards of the state that, and, yeah, I guess.
I only had to read through it three times and then go to a meeting and then two hours to try to. Drink it down to something that was digestible.
I need you, I've always known your advice of the night.
I mean, all the decisions needs to slide, it's like, we've been doing a lot of work at the city level to try to encourage housing. And commercial development and industrial development, and. I mean, maybe some cities that got their head in the sand and like have no idea what's going on, I just don't think we've ever been one of them, right, I just think that. We've been doing a lot of work to make housing more affordable. I just think that we've been doing a lot of work to make housing more affordable, yet still attractive. I just feel like we've been doing a lot of the things right and have the state come down and say, hey, since you're not doing this right. Here's how you do it and be so prescriptive, it's kind of a slap in the face of local land use planning, which is what. Oregon adopted, you know, decades ago, and it it does feel like a slap in the face, it really does, it's kind of. Do it, do it this way.
Which is what bothered me about those relative ten percent reductions, you know, we could just go out and increase everything by ten percent, so the ten. Ten percent reduction just gets us back down to where we intended to be originally.
Full circle.
Can you have that pretty red course next month?
The full circle, the force circle motion.
No, let's not chase our tail.
The chase our tail motion.
There are these, a lot of these provisions will be helpful, right? I mean, for communities that are needing the guidance, for larger communities that are kicking against the bricks, I mean, I I get it, right? But I just don't like the process that they go through, but at the end of the day, we're trying to get more housing for more people. Oregonians, and I think that that's a good thing. At the end of the day, we're all trying to reduce the cost of the housing by increasing availability and reducing the costs, and those are all good things. It's just, you know, I feel like, again, for community, it feels like we're already doing a lot of those things to do that. And now we gotta spend our time focusing on this instead of finishing developing our own code provisions. That are gonna do this but better with more of a Falmouth local planning focus on it.
Well, what Gary said, I mean, I, now that I think about it. We did, some of the things that we're, we've changed or will be changing, I mean, we have like the size of lots and stuff like that. We we went smaller already, and now now with this, we'll we'll go smaller.
Do I understand the ADU setback because a lot of the properties were having issues if they're below seven thousand square feet with that rear yard setback?
That ten percent could make a difference.
Yeah, and at ten feet, I mean, that resolves ninety-five percent of the issues.
We just had a conversation three months ago and said, this is problematic, and these small lots at the ADUs will probably need to look to change our rules. So that the setback is shorter distance when you've got an ADU on a small lot, depending on the height. If it's single story, you can be, you know, ten foot from the back fence instead of fifteen. So it's like, again, we like intuitively already think of these things, and then you have to say, hey, we were gonna tell you how to do it, and it's like, we're already there. But now we have to pass this and look at this instead of spending time working on our Falmouth development code. So that's the frustration.
And 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 then they keep saying, well, we have issues with this product, we have issues, like, we're working on it. This is not final, it's like, all these messages keep delaying.
And it's so focused on residential development in your downtown area that ignores all of the effort we're doing. Better residential development of infill areas in the downtown and the not-so-downtown and our subdivisions. But all of this focuses in your downtown area, it's like. Yeah, we'll see some growth there, but it's like that's where you want all of the residential focused growth is in the downtown core. Cuz we have a lot of areas in town that could have a little bit more increased density, right? So it's just, it's very top level, top-heavy and whatever, multiply. And on that note, I'll say this, since it's been recorded, we had our meeting with DLCD early this week.
Yeah, probably.
Last week, today's only.
Yeah, it was last week.
Weeks blur together, the weekends are so short. And I believe Albany's asked for extension on their climate-friendly equitable area approval, Corvallis has asked for an extension. Kai, who else was in the meeting? Maybe just those two.
Yeah, I think it was just those two, and it dares like we're not doing it.
Required to do it, so of all the agencies sitting there, Falmouth was the gold, got the gold star, and I told them I need a gold star. We're passing our climate-friendly equitable communities on time, before the end of the year, we're there, we're compliant. They were asking for, well, eventually we're gonna need some, you know, geofiles for our, for the maps and everything of your area. So we'll get those all done, like, when do you want them? We got them, we got them tomorrow, well, not ready for them. So I thought I'd give them to you tomorrow, they got another gold star. So anyway, again, even though it's pretty obvious by my satire and body language. That I think a lot of this, again, we're already kinda doing, I think a lot of this is kind of time wasted on Falmouth at least. Great for other communities, maybe, I I, we can still be compliant and we can still enact this and we can still do what's gonna be best for Falmouth. I I think we've had, we've shown that we can take what the state's dishing out. We could just enough to not adversely impact the city too much, not waste a lot of time. You know, we didn't have twenty public hearings on CFEs, you know, we had a couple, um, we hosted one, we had one other. Had some outreach at the farmers market, we didn't spend a lot of extra time and effort spinning our wheels behind climate-friendly equitable areas. We didn't have all the neighborhoods coming out and everybody, you know, it's like, we just kept it simple, solved for what it was, adopted what needed to be adopted. And we've turned the page, we're moving forward in a good, positive way, so. All that said, good to be done, good to be compliant, will it help in the long run? Maybe. But if it didn't, we didn't waste a lot of time wringing our arms and hands about it and fighting it, right? Like, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna spend time fighting the state on this stuff. What's the easiest way we can get to compliance so we can move forward doing what I think is the more pertinent, important work? Not just going around renaming streets, right? Like, what's the more important stuff we can be doing?
Getting things developed.
Anyway, sorry, get off the soapbox.
I didn't know the Corval, oh yeah, Corvallis and Albany going for an extension, that's kind of surprising to me. When, and and it's like, and when they told us what the extension, because at first we were thinking like, well, we're gonna be making all the updates, let's just do all at once and just get the code completely done. And then I saw, here's all the requirements, I'm like, okay, maybe we, it's like, and Chris had mentioned, it's like, well, we already said that we were gonna do it this way, so we just went out and. Went with it because it wasn't worth the extra time for the extension report, and I'm just like, once I saw, I'm like, yeah, this is not. A good use of time, I think we're better off, we're already done all this, it's like, might as well just get it through, we got our DLCD notes, so.
Okay, so, um, staff update.
This one I didn't look at as much. Okay, we did get a decision on the application to replace the existing grandstand and announcer booth. And it's all new bathroom facilities for the Falmouth. Um, and other rodeo grounds, and so that's all done, and then, of course, the city council. Um, passed the annexation of rezone and then, um, on this, um, November twenty-fifth, December ninth, they passed the ordinance for it unanimously. Uh, the amendment to um, adopt the CFA, passed the city council on Monday twenty, November twenty-fifth. And then the ordinance on Monday, December ninth. And then we have two new um, site design reviews, this is for the Cribs property, so they can redevelop and they just sent me an updated change. And I'll have to talk to Chris about that. Uh, and then the site design review to add a outdoor food court with food trucks. Um, at the Farm and Feed Store, Twenty-S sixth and Main. So those are the two um, things that are um, pending right now with um, comment periods, and then. Building permits that have been issued.
Instead of food court?
Yeah, they wanna have like, they're converting two horse stalls that are tall by tall to be covering, to protect people from the elements. And then they're gonna have like, three or four food trucks that are gonna be lined up and it's like, and so it's still some. But then after speaking with fire, there's some, some other, we're, we're gonna have to have a meeting on it because uh, um, just like. All the stuff that I presented today with changes in law, um, the fire code has dramatically changed for food trucks um, that goes in effect, so. Yeah, it's like.
Break through the cover, it's, oh my gosh, it's like the documents that um, that um, Rich sent me.
I'm like, yeah, we need a pre-application meeting on this, this is not digestible, it is like twelve attachments of new regulations.
And where was that?
Um, it's gonna be at the Farm and Feed Store over at Twenty-S sixth and Main. Granton Grant Properties owns it and they're just trying to do an accessory use um, um, to have, get more activity uh, to their store.
At West, at West Farm.
At West, thank you. My name was, that name was just not in my brain at the moment.
Then we have these two meetings coming up. Um, so, well, we, we'll be able to get back into our code. We're gonna get it through, we have some more state stuff coming down the bike that's gonna.
I don't think we'll be ready to, uh, for a little bit, the residential was close to getting in front of you, I, I went back to residential. Oh no, excuse me, I went back to the commercial, um, I cleaned it up quite a bit, just didn't have enough time last week to polish it, so. Well, not even polish it, at least to spit-shine it. So next month in January, um, I'll have the commercial and industrial back. Um, there's been, over the last year, there's been several other little tidbits that have crept in, so I'll try to highlight those from. Here's things we talked about before, here's the more recent things, so I'm hoping to give a very good look at commercial in January. A really good look at residential in February and come March, really start looking about. You know, here's our code, we're ninety-five percent there, we think, are we ready to schedule some meetings for March, April? Do we wanna do some more outreach first? Do we wanna set the hearing, see who shows up, and then do some more outreach? And we can kind of talk through that a little bit, I'm, I'm concerned about doing a whole lot of outreach in November, December, obviously. So, so I think and get into January, February for our kind of final reviews on things. And then um, as early as March, so we'll play that outcome January, February, we'll see how you're feeling about the changes. And maybe kind of be thinking about feedback if you, you know, farmers market stuff doesn't really start till later in the spring, so we'd probably be doing our own. Open houses or outreach, community walking tours, or I mean, there's some other things we could do for outreach.
In terms of getting that out to us? Before, for the weekend of the twenty-first or before the, I mean, maybe a week or a week before or something like that? Is, I think that might be possible? Cuz cuz you know, it's gonna be fairly big.
Mark it on your calendar now, that weekend. Yes, I will try to get it out, for sure that.
I'm, I'm sure.
Sure the Thursday before, if not the Wednesday before, but. If I get done sooner than that, then I'll get it out, but, yeah. I'm taking a couple of days off next week. Just holiday, they.
The Starlight Village commercial permits is that, the generator?
Oh, what is that one, Chris? That one I'm not familiar with.
Just this commercial permit.
HOA?
Oh, yeah.
That's a gen set?
Uh, no, Starlight Village HOA, I don't know who that is.
That's the village.
The generator would not be the HOA, so I'm not sure what the, what the HOA is doing up there.
When it runs?
Yeah.
So it is operational?
They've been testing it, yeah.
Yeah, well, I I saw that they were testing it.
And I'll be giving Chris a few, there's a couple sign definitions, I add a sign question, and based on our code, what was proposed was technically not a sign. So gotta add some definitions for pedestrian sign and awning sign. Um, so that way it's like can actually do a sign permit, but there's a loophole where awning is not a sign, so could not. It still needed a structural permit, but it.
September thing, we'll be looking at our sign code and giving it a good, solid. Event, cuz it's not been updated in a long time and there's some newer technology that's out now, they've got these like digital sign boards.
Oh, yeah.
Of those.
Oh, yeah.
Um, nowhere in our code, nowhere in our code, so there's still a house, there's updates that we need to make to our sign code, and it's. Honestly, it's probably a lot more complicated right now than what it needs to be, so they're gonna simplify that and give some good direction on.
And so, and we have two members of this organ, this group that moves are up. Do we know what's happening as far as them carrying on? I'm not gonna speak for who's on the, on the, which call right, I'm just, I'm just asking general questions over.
Yeah, so, I just saw something, we should recognize Gary Connor, our chair. Is gonna be termed out, so he'll be coming off the planning commission, I wanna thank Gary for the time that he's spent. Especially this last several years stepping up as the chair, I think that he's served an important role when it was needed. What I always push about Gary is he's not in a hurry to rush a decision, that he makes sure that people have time to get their input. And we've thought through things, and he's very thoughtful himself and always has good things to contribute, so. Gary, you will be missed, appreciate all your efforts, and I'll let you speak in a second, I'm gonna go on to Haley Green is also notified. That she's not gonna up for another um, term, she's been completing her term into this month. Um, and she's not gonna submit for a new term, she's a very busy mother now with a very busy family. And so she's gonna focus her time and attention there, uh, but opened the door, said, you know, at some point in the future, when my schedule frees up a little bit. Definitely enjoyed the experience, wanna be involved for sure, but now is not the season in her life to be doing that, so she'll be out, so. We'll have the two, those two positions open, um, we're actually, we've been promoting the openings through social media and the newsletter. That'll go out, we'll take applications, I think, just through the end of the calendar year. And then it, the first meeting in January, the city council makes selections from the applicants.
Has there been any application? You don't need to name names, it just.
Honestly, can't tell you for this one, I know we've got two applications for the city council vacancy, that's one I've been looking at closer. Um, Crystal's been tracking all of the others that have been coming in, cuz they come into her, the admin, she's, so I couldn't tell you honestly. I would assume that there are, but I think I can't tell you.
Have you reached out to the one person that spoke at the um, planning commission meeting um, about the annexation of rezone?
I've reached out to maybe a half a dozen people and just invited them and like made them aware. Um, I mean, in total, I've probably reached out about a dozen people for one committee or another, just people that have shown interest in the past. Um, people that have provided testimony at meetings that I was like, oh, they sound like they're interested in getting involved, so here's an invitation to get involved. So, yeah, you know, I just make quick phone calls or emails and just make them aware of the application process, invite them to attend, but I don't do a whole lot more than that. So, yeah, so that'll be the first meeting in January, so your first meeting in January will probably have at least two. New folks, new new appointees that'll be here.
Ruth, are we losing you?
Yes, you are.
I'm sorry.
You're gonna be ruthless.
Why are you doubling down on ruthlessness?
The city council will be recognizing both Gary and Haley at the January meeting. Um, they've been invited to attend, Gary, you got your invitation from Crystal?
I I knew that it was happening, so maybe I did, or maybe I read it somewhere else, I think I read it in the city newsletter.
Okay, but I should have got a email from Crystal inviting you, um, if not, we'll get that invitation out tomorrow, sorry about that. Um, but anyway, they'll be recognized by the mayor and the city council at the January meeting. Um, all of our volunteers that are coming off of committee, we do that in January as well, we formally recognize them. But always appropriate in the last meeting of the year to do that, but the city council will give some appreciation as well in January, so.
So what exactly are the term limit rules for the planning commission?
It's a four-year term and you're limited to two back-to-back terms. Then you've gotta come off, and then you could be reappointed in the future.
You could apply and start in January.
Man's gonna be out suppressing the interest.
Well, if you, if you don't want me to show up with a lot of comments at public hearings, do a real good job on this code work you're doing.
Think the code's pretty, I think the administrative rules give the council the authority to appoint regardless of terming out. If nobody else applies, it kind of opens up, so the intent is to allow others to apply and to serve. If nobody else is willing to, the council has the ability to go ahead and make initial appointments. But I think we, I think they would wanna get through this application process first, finalize it, and then they would say, hey. But I think we, I think they would wanna get through this application process first, finalize it, and then they would say, hey, let's reach out back to Gary and Haley's, see if they're interested.
And then I'd have to go out whether, I, I'd have to weigh out which side of the, that table I wanted to be on for the final changes.
Well, wait till you get your really sharp, nice-looking certificate in January, and then after you get that really nice appreciation certificate, then you can decide.
All right, any other business wants to see me? All right. All right.
You know she's without her name tag, she took that out at the city council meeting.
Crystal did the post-it though, though.
Thank you, Gary.
Thank you.